For all board members, we are beginning live streaming right now as a reminder for picking up sound both here in the room as well as for anybody that is listening to your live stream. Your microphones are turned off. When you're ready to speak, please bring them to your mouth and turn the microphones on. Mr. Martinez, can you see a few people sending through Zoom? Okay, we are up and running. Okay, thank you, Dr. Orthing. We are ready to begin whenever you want.
All right, thank you. Mr. Bleeker? Hello? Can you hear me? All right. Excellent. All right. This meeting of the Mawa Board of Education is open to members of the public to be physically present. Members of the public that attend will be asked to follow the same procedures as all other visitors to our schools. Those procedures can be found on the Agenda page of our website. Additionally, the board meeting will be livestreamed for viewing purposes only. Anyone wishing to view the meeting may do so via Zoom. The webinar ID is 812-10828281, and the required password is 235551. All right, I call the meeting to order. Roll call, Mr.
Ms. DeVenera.
Here.
Mr. DeSilva.
Mr. Denise.
Here.
Mr. Gallo.
Here.
Mr. Hughes.
Here.
Mr. Kuzmarsky.
Here.
Dr. Park.
Ms. Cohn.
Here.
Student representative, Mr. Edward Kane.
Here.
And Dr. Orthing.
Here. Adequate notice of agenda of this meeting has been provided to the Ridgewood News and the Record specifying that the Mawa Board of Education will meet on January 25, 2023, in the administrative offices, 60 Ridge Road, Mawa, New Jersey. A copy was filed with the township clerk. Salute to the flag. Mr. Kuzmarsky.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you, Mr. Kuzmarsky. All right, we do require an executive session in the beginning of our meeting this evening, so I need a motion to recess to exec. Mr. Kuzmarsky, second by Mr. Gallo. We will be about 15, 20 minutes, and Mr. Bleeker will inform you if we will be a few minutes later. Thank you very much.[174.79]
Motion to reconvene to public action meeting, Mr. Gallo, second by Ms. Cakone. Agenda questions. Please limit your questions at this time to resolutions under new business on this agenda. As a matter of fairness, you are asked to limit your questions to no more than one, your remarks to no longer than three minutes. If you are here representing a group, please identify yourself, the group, and your position in the group. If you are an individual, please provide us with your name and address. This section of public participation will be limited to 15 minutes. Please specify the resolution you are referring to in your question. All right, I need a motion to open the meeting to the public. Mr. Kizmarski, second by Mr. Hughes. All right, we are officially open to the public. All right, seeing no one stepping forward, I have a motion to close the meeting to the public. Mr. Kizmarski and Mr. Gallo. All right, and superintendent's report, Ms. Dr. Dittoro.
Thank you. We have a number of things that we'd like to share. We'd like to start off with, as we all know, the state has asked the districts to share various data points. Dr. Ravino, Ms. Polway, and Mr. Jarvis are back again to share a new piece of data with all of you. They'll give you context specific to the type of assessment, what it covers, and the length of the assessment. So, Dr. Ravino?
Thank you. Good evening. Today, we're going to talk to you about the Start Strong assessment. If you remember, back in the COVID days, in 2020, 2021, can you hear me?
The volume is off.
Can you hear me?
No.
Hello?
Mr. Theodore can hear.
I can hear.
Hello? Better? Okay. So, back in the COVID ages, in 2020, 2021, there were assessments
from the state that we didn't, we were not required to administer. So, the NJSLA was not administered, but the state created an assessment called the Start Strong. So, the Start Strong started as a pilot, and then became, it became a test that we had to give last year. And at this point, we still give the NJSLA, so that came back, which we reported on Danielle and, I'm sorry, Ms. Polway, and Mr. Jarvis reported on that back in November. And then, we also give the New Jersey Graduation Proficiency Exam, which I talked to you a little bit about a couple months ago. But, the Start Strong assessment is a very quick exam given in the fall, and it's really a snapshot that's supposed to be used in conjunction with your other assessments. It's not supposed to be a standalone assessment. And what you'll look to see is the second bullet down, when you're talking about it's a standard-based assessment, in comparison to the NJSLA. The NJSLA covers the gamut of standards within a grade level. With Start Strong, it only covers prioritized standards. So, for ELA, you only cover about 50% of the standards for the grade level. And what this test is saying to us is, in the beginning of the year, are your students ready for learning, and what level are they ready to receive? The other, the bullet at the bottom just reminds you that we can't compare it to NJSLA results because it's such a small subset of questions and results. And Mrs. Polway and Mr. Jarvis will get into exactly how many we're talking about. Have any questions?
Okay, so, can you hear me this way?
Yes.
Okay. So, as per the NJLE guidelines, the Start Strong assessment was administered in September of this year. We actually did it within the first two weeks of school. By design, it's a 45 to 60-minute assessment per subject. Within that 45 to 60 minutes, the assessment looks a little different based on the subject area. For example, ELA is approximately 10 questions, broken into two parts. They're all multiple choice. Mathematics is a 15 to 26-question assessment based on grade level and course level. And it focuses both ELA mathematics focused on that prior-year subset of standards. Science is roughly 24 questions. It's a little unique among the three assessments in that it doesn't focus on prior years subset of standards. It focuses on prior three-year subset of standards, which include life science, current science, and physical science as well. So, as you've either probably seen or heard from the results that went home to the students, the Start Strong assessments are broken down into three performance levels that indicate readiness for grade-level instruction. They include strong support may be needed, some support may be needed, or less support may be needed. These are based on raw score cutoffs as determined by the state. And you know what? On a note, while you're looking at the results, based on the variability that passed that split, that cutoff might be a very small subset of questions as well.
So, as Mr. Jarvis just, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
As Mr. Jarvis just spoke about, the test is a little bit different per subject level. The ELA, we'll talk about a little bit here first in terms of who takes what level test. So, it's a little bit more straightforward with ELA. So, our students in the fourth grade are the first students to actually take the Start Strong assessments, and they're assessed on the prior year's ELA standards. So, again, it's a little bit more straightforward. So, if you're a fourth grader, you're being assessed on third-grade standards, all the way up to a 10th grader being assessed on ninth-grade standards. So, and our Start Strong stops at the grade level of grade 10 because that is where our NJSLA state assessments also stop at grade 10. Okay, so that's kind of the correlation the state uses. I'll skip down to science for a second because math gets a little bit tricky when you start talking about the course level. So, science is straightforward, but not straightforward because this test is not given every year from fourth through 10th grade. The test is actually administered in the sixth and ninth and the 12th grade because the way that the standards are grouped by the state, they're grouped in grade bands. So, the sixth-grade science test is actually taking a look at priority standards or readiness level of students learning grades three through five set of standards. The next grade band is six through eight. So, in grade nine, students are being looked at, are we ready on those standards in the grade band six through eight? And then, grade 12 is the grade band, the high school grade band of nine through 11. Okay? Going back to the math, with the math test, the math Start Strong students in grade four are our first-tested level of students. And from grade four up to grade eight, it's pretty straightforward. It's the previous year's standards that students will be actually being assessed on, okay, for their preparedness level. But then, when you get to grade eight, in grade eight, we do have some students who have shown us some readiness level to accelerate in their math courses, so they're taking different math courses. So, even if you're sitting in grade eight, that might not mean that the test that you took is the Start Strong is assessing seventh-grade standards. So, if you're in grade eight and you're in a pre-algebra eight standard, in a pre-algebra eight class, it's the seventh-grade standards versus if you're in an algebra class or a geometry class, you're being assessed on pre-algebra eight standards, which is in the eighth-grade standards. Algebra II links directly to Algebra I, so it skips back to the Algebra I standards. It's not geometry, which is, in a traditional sequence, you might think of Algebra I, geometry, and Algebra II. That Algebra II would be looking at a readiness level from geometry, but that's not the case. So, that's the way that the tests are set up.
This slide is showing you participation rates for each grade level. So, you might see some slight variations. For instance, at the top, you'll see ELA four, 186 kids. MAT, math, four, 188 kids. The difference in number could be anything compared, anything from an absence to, we do have students that are exempt from taking the ELA exam based off their entrance to the United States and their L status. So, those are those slight variations in numbers. But then, when you jump down to ELA nine, Algebra I, and science nine, do you see that line? That line is what, exactly what Mrs. Polway was just talking about. So, ELA nine, there were 222 kids that took that test. If you look over to science nine, again, 222. But if you look at the math, Algebra I number, it's 244. And that is because there are multiple grade levels of students that could have taken the Algebra I test. So, this includes eighth graders, ninth graders, some 10th graders. Even, we have, I think, about seven 7th graders that took the Algebra I test. So, that's why that number is a little bit of a difference there. Okay, so this is a fun slide. This is the first time you're going to see colors having to do with the bands that Mr. Jarvis spoke about. So, when you see the top band at the top, you're seeing that dark-colored band. That is indicating the students that need less support. The middle band, that middle purple, is students that need some support. And that light purple on the bottom is indicating students that need strong support. Ergo, getting them for the test, Strong, Start Strong. So, when you're looking at these bands, oh, and you're not going to see them, when they come back on, wherever they went, oh, there we go, what you're, what I really want you to focus on are the top two colors. So, the dark purple and that medium purple. Those students right there are ready to learn standards of the upcoming grade. In the, in the light purple, those students are students that we need to build in more support in order for them to be well-prepared to receive the grade level standards. If you look at the red number to the right, you'll see in ELA in math that when you're comparing 59 to 55, that is actually our last year's score. So, you're going to see throughout this presentation cohort analysis. So, you'll see what the cohort did the previous year, and then what our number is for this year. So, if you're looking at ELA, this year, we had 59% of our students in that dark purple. Last year was 55%. And if you look at that light, that light purple at the bottom, we had 20%, 22% last year, and we've made that decrease to 20%. So, you want the light purple to go down, and you want the large purple to go up. And then, you can look across, so you'll see increases. The reason why you don't have an increase or decrease in science is because there are different cohorts of children. So, we can't compare science scores from last year to this year since it's a different cohort. Okay, so on this slide, it's the same bars that you saw on the previous slide at the top. On the bottom, these are our state comparison bars. We always like to compare ourselves to the state. You're not going to see these bars over and over again because we have outperformed the state on almost every single indicator in every single subject area. But this just highlights for you the differences. So, the top, the left bar, you see ELA, middle bar math, right bar science. When you're looking at the state bars, that first bar is ELA, middle bar is math, bottom bar is science. And if you can see, all but one area, we have outperformed the state. The one little area was, we're equal, is the middle bar for ELA, which is 21% for us, and the middle bar for ELA, where it's 21.5 for the state.
Okay, so as Dr. Ravino had just mentioned, this is our first content cohort comparison slide for our ELA results from the fall of 2021 to this year 2022. As you can see, the majority of our cohorts increased proficiency across the course from last year. Of note, we outperformed the state at each grade level and preparedness level as well. In-house, our current fifth-grade cohort increased their readiness level by about a little over 20%. So, that's a point of pride for us. At our current sixth- and 10th-grade level, we see a slight decrease in the amount of the dark purple range. However, keep in mind that the light purple range on both of those grade levels is in a comparable range to the rest of the grade levels as well. So, on a little positive note, you'll see that the ninth and 10th-grade level cohorts have a decrease in the light purple range as well.
And here, this slide depicts, we have four cohorts that we can take a look at because, as mentioned before, the fourth through the seventh graders actually have a cohort that would be connected to them from last year. And again, we have, I'll just reiterate with Dr. Ravino and what Mr. Jarvis alluded to, all throughout the comparison to our state percentages, we outperform the state by leaps and bounds. When we take a look here, and one thing to highlight is all of the dark purple bands again, looking from fall of '21 to fall of '22, that those dark purple brand, dark purple bands have grown in our needing less support, and that's really where we're looking to go to when we look at that smaller snapshot of these questions that are on the Start Strong assessment. Of note is looking at the eighth-grade score. So, again, remember, when you look at that eighth-grade comparison going from left to right with those two charts on the bottom, you can't really compare those two because it's not the same eighth graders. So, across to the right, when you're taking a look at the students that are in the Algebra I, the Algebra II, and geometry, those are students in the Algebra I and the geometry data there that could also be eighth graders. Right?
Okay, and this is this year's science results. As Dr. Ravino mentioned, again, we don't have a cohort comparison to our current science results. Again, the assessment is given essentially every three years if you're a student in the district. The test has only been around for three years, so within the next two years, we will have a true cohort comparison. But on the note, we did outperform the state again at each grade level and preparedness level.
Okay, so this is the first slide of disaggregated data. This slide is showing you gender comparisons, female, male, in each category, language arts, mathematics, and science. When you look at the numbers, they are comparable. They're very similar. You will see a slight, a slight proficiency increase or preparedness level in females in language arts, and a slight increase over females, males over females, in science and mathematics. Although their percentages are pretty close, it's something for us to take into account when we're looking at our programs, but certainly not something that does not trend the same as the state. So, when you look at the state data, it trends exactly the same way.
Okay, this slide shows our demographic breakdown for grade-level preparedness by ethnicity. There's a lot to take in on this slide, so I'll give you a look at this. While I do, though, please consider that while MAU follow very similar trends in the state, we did, in fact, outperform the state in each of the content areas and preparedness categories. Points of pride that we will note for our MAU cohorts, our Asian population increased across all three content assessments by an average 3.5%. Our Black and African-American population improved by about 14% in ELA. Our Hispanic and Latino population, about 14% in mathematics. And our demographic that identifies as two or more races improved by about 10% in science. So, through our NJTSS initiative and our data team model, we look at the individual group needs, and we look at the patterns that exist in multiple data points across those. And what we do is we identify those areas that need improvement. We implement or develop, and then implement our strategies to assist those students that put the proper supports in place to assist those students and provide, you know, that quality education.
Okay, this is the final slide on disaggregated data. There are three different areas here, economically disadvantaged, current L and former L, IEP and 504. Two areas that we don't normally present on that are on this slide are former L. And former L is all of the students that have come through our L program, that have graduated out of that L program by taking the access test and hitting a level of proficiency. And then, the last one down there that we usually do not have on a slide is a 504. 504 is under the umbrella of special education and IDA, and that's why it is put together with the IEP category. When looking at our, and I'll kind of, kind of jump around here, but when looking at our English language learners, I want to actually highlight some, some points here. We look at former Ls over four years. So, we track our former Ls for a four-year process in our district, and that is who's included in that number. And if you look at the students that, these students went through our program, they've had our instruction, and they are prepared for, for learning. So, you look at the current Ls to, in comparison to former Ls, and we feel very proud of the work that we've been doing with our Ls, especially with our, our teachers that have been working hand-in-hand with them over the last couple years to bring their proficiency levels up, and we're seeing that increase in those Start Strong scores there. If you look at students with disabilities at the bottom, we always remind, every time we do a presentation, when you're looking at IEP numbers, these are students that have specialized learning goals, and they're not necessarily aligned to grade-level standards or norms. So, these students still have to take the test. They're not exempt from taking it. But I will tell you, both in ELA and math, we have improved our scores from the previous year, and we scored higher than the state in all those areas. For economically disadvantaged, at the top, we also show the non-economically disadvantaged as well, that bar. And what those red numbers are showing you are participation numbers within that group. So, for economically disadvantaged, the students who took the test, there were 142 students that are quoted as economically disadvantaged. When you look at those scores again, we have increased our proficiency in all areas, and we outperform the state in all areas. So, although we see some, some areas that we definitely want to target through NJTSS and our data teams, we are encouraged by the fact that previous, this cohort last year has done significantly better in increasing their score this year with the same cohort numbers.
So, speaking to what Dr. Ravino just alluded to with NJTSS, we have layered on some heavy-duty, I should say, interventions that we've been actually working with the students with since September. So, if you take a look at the slide, and if you were looking at the slide earlier this year, you'll notice that it, it looks very similar to what we reported out on when we reported on the NJSLA and what kinds of interventions were being employed, given that data. So, again, looking at Start Strong as an additional data point and not just the only piece of data that we take a look at to help our students, through NJSLA, looking at Start Strong, looking at our homegrown benchmarks and other data that we've been able to collect through NJTSS, we've added on layered strategies to support all of our students. All of the students that you just saw in the previous two slides, plus the students that are sitting in our, just in our tier one. So, I'd just like to highlight a couple of them which are highlighted on the slide for you, and they speak to the different NJTSS-initiated tier-one interventions, which interestingly are, are revolving around helping students to acquire and use academic vocabulary in a way that supports their learning to their grade-level standards. One point of pride and one thing that we'd like to really point out is this, the use of the win periods, the what I need now periods in the elementary school, which is providing students and teachers with that opportunity for small-group instruction to really target what the students are needing. I'm sorry, that's my phone, I think, ringing through. I can't figure, I can't figure out how to turn off the favorites ringing through. And that's my daughter. That's my, that's my daughter. She's probably asking me for help on her phone. And, did I mention, oh, oh, so, and then moving into the middle school and into the high And did I mention, oh, so, and then moving into the middle school and into the high school, we've been taking a look over the last couple of years and really having an initiative to look at data to identify our struggling learners. So again, adding on the layer with the NJTSS interventions and the extra look that we were doing already with the struggling learners has really put us in a specific place to help our kids. The slide won't leave.
Thank you. Did you have any questions?
Could you go back to the slide that was right before the support slide? It's just a mine question.
Ms. Condon, why don't you use a microphone for your question?
Sorry.
I think that's the one. I think it's a different song.
No, what was it about?
It was at the beginning, it was the number of students who took the ELA.
Uh huh.
Okay, so. Okay, I think I just answered my own question. ELA eight, there's 212 that took the students who took it.
But there's a few weren't bad at it.
Okay. I thought it was ELA six, that's why I wanted to go back and look. That's ELA eight.
Any other questions, Mr. Kuzmareski?
Sure. I guess a few and probably someone asked before, asked like this, when did we get these results?
Such a good question. Let me ask her that about the Gepa too. So they came to us, they were unreported, they are unreported usually around November. The reported profile, when they say, yes, you can report them out, came right before winter break. We sent the results home, I think January 4th, I believe was the date, to families. So we had just received them, I don't know the exact date, but I believe it was the 22nd or 23rd in there.
So I guess my issue is the same issue I had last year, but not an issue with the district. The issue is with the state of New Jersey giving us usable information in January for our kids' learning deficiencies in September. Thankfully, we have educators in this district who are able to spot those deficiencies immediately in the first days of school. So I mean, I think the tests we've done are given for at least Mawa standpoint in January, just to see where we really are and what our teachers have been able to do. Because right now, I mean, this information is great and great data points and see where we were in September, but from a usable information standpoint for a teacher, or even from a parent's standpoint, customer's standpoint, they're pointless numbers because their kids are so far beyond where they were at that point, at least we hope, you know, as a district. It does point out the learning loss still exists or existed in September, so that's obviously something to be concerned about. But at the same time, you know, just the state of New Jersey again, this is something they could probably get turned around a little quicker than four or five months.
Yeah, and they do remind us, and you're right, the turnaround time on standardized assessments is lengthy, right, at best. They do remind you that for this in particular test, or a particular test, we have to look at other data points and it's not only one indication. So you're exactly right. Our professionals, our staff, look at multiple data points in the beginning of the year and continue to do that. But in the beginning of the year, that's why we're sitting with your child and we're reading with them one-on-one, or we're giving proficiency exams on intake in high school, middle school, to say, where are you, what do you know? Because we can't wait until January to make decisions on how to help your child. So we use this as a data point that we can say, okay, hey, this is where we were, how do we do it in terms of comparison cohort? This year gives us a little bit better of an insight into that we're moving in the right direction than last year. Last year, it was just a blank number we've never seen it before. This, at least, you can see that we were moving in the right direction with our instruction last year. So, and then with NJTSS this year, it's, we're hoping to see even more gains if we do it again in the fall of next year.
Thank you, Mr. Kuzmareski. Any other questions, Ms. Daveniera?
I just have one question. For Science 12, there's 196 students who took it, and that number seems low. So do not, do all seniors have to take it, or are there seniors who are exempt from taking it?
You'll have a, you'll have a mix of seniors who do take it and opt out, so those numbers do fluctuate. That's why you see the fluctuation in the numbers.
Yeah.
Maybe if they're absent, there's a number of reasons why the numbers fluctuate.
Okay.
And remember, the Algebra II doesn't quite align with Science 12.
Oh, yeah.
So for that cohort, I don't have the cohort number for 12, we could be right around there. So 196, because if you look at, let's say, look at cohort ELA four, you're at 186 for that cohort, so 196 for 12th grade could be right on target.
Okay, I just want to show a figure. I thought graduation number was higher this year, but I could.
We fluctuate. Yeah, we fluctuate.
That's close to the number of our graduation class. I dropped my microphone. It had nothing to do with your question, it was more I dropped the microphone. But that's very close to the number of our graduates for this year.
All right, any other questions, comments? All right, thank you, Dr. Ravino.
Thank you.
Ms. Polway, Mr. Jarvis, thank you very much for your comprehensive presentation. Maybe lights up?
Okay, so as I continue my superintendent report.
Do you want lights up?
Nope, no, thank you.
No lights up, okay.
So we started this a couple board meetings ago, and I believe our middle school girls' soccer team started this trend, and we felt like it's a great opportunity for us to celebrate some accomplishments in our district because so often, we talk about it in passing, but we really don't get a chance to appreciate the work that's being done. We have not sent, which we will, sent communication out to the district about this award because I'm very proud of it. We'll be sending it out either Thursday or Friday. We wanted to have a chance of speaking it at the board meeting first. As you can see up on the board, we recently were awarded a ITEEA STEM School of Excellence. You might ask, what does ITEEA stand for? It's the International Technology and Engineering Education Association. You might also say, well, what does one do to earn this wonderful privilege? Actually, I think Danielle and Dennis just left. But Danielle, Dennis, and, I'm sorry, Ms. Polway, Mr. Jarvis, and Mr. Pascal saw this opportunity and applied for it. And what the application consisted of was a number of the different components, not even just within our high school, but within our curriculum K through 12. So they were selected as a School of Excellence, and then within the application, they spoke about the high school STEAM Career Pathways Program, they spoke about our STEAM outreach and our community service. Some, there's a number of examples, one of the examples most recently is our high school students built cornhole boards for our township to use during one of the community days, just really creating that connection. Our T3 Innovation and Inventions Course was one of the courses that they spotlighted for units revolving around the planning, design, building, and competitions using our engineering process. Our family-oriented STEAM events, the Mawa High School Visual Performing Arts and Integrated Design Festival that took place in the spring. Our textbook presentation, which Dr. Ravino, Dr. Fair, and our former Ruth Davis presented last year, which was definitely a point of pride for us, that they were able to share our story with districts around the state. Also, clubs related to engineering, which established mentors with Lang Engineering, Stryker, Panasonic, and NJIT. And finally, the GEMS Program, which is Girls Excelling in Math and Science. So we talk about things in isolation often, but this is a great opportunity for us to talk about the program as a whole is a point of pride for Mawa, and this accomplishment is just the beginning along the lines of us celebrating our accomplishments, looking at our program of studies and making sure that it meets the high expectations that we feel our Mawa students deserve. So we will be sending out communication to the district, K through 12, because we think it's really important that it's not just isolated to our high school community. We really want our middle school students to understand the potential and possibilities of going into the high school, but also our K5 students understanding what that end goal really is. So we wanted to take a moment to share that with our board.
Thank you very much.
So.
There's more, okay. I'll say nothing for all. Too many, is this?
So along with that distinction, we also wanted to highlight kind of a current event that occurred in our district recently. On January 13th, we have an author visit of Jasmine Worga. So she is an author of one of our books in our sixth-grade curriculum. Ms. Condon, you read the book?
Yeah.
Yes, it's beautifully written. So Mrs. Savino and Ms. Malone are our sixth-grade ELA team. They wrote a grant through the MSF to have one of the authors of our curricular text to come in to speak to our sixth grader, sixth-grade students. The grant was approved, obviously, and the event took place in the Ramco Ridge Library Media Center. So we'll show you some images from the event. The students were really engaged, the speaker was wonderful, and we'll speak to what the presentation looked like, what Ms. Worga spoke about, as well as there was a highlighted VIP session for those students who completed an additional assignment for consideration. So Ms. Worga has written a variety of young adult books, that seems to be her genre, but particularly her 2019 children's book about a Syrian refugee living in Ohio titled Other Words for Home: One A Newberry Honor, which is the annual distinction of those pieces of literature for children as well as other awards. So our sixth graders have just completed their reading of the text. This book tells the story of a 12-year-old Jude who lives with her family in a seaside tourist town in Syria. The Syrian civil war forced her parents to make the difficult decision for Jude and her mother to flee to the United States to live with their uncle's family. This book describes Jude's perspective on being separated from her original home, family, and friends, the struggle to learn English and feel accepted at school, and on the confusing and conflicting feelings she has of dearly missing her home while also finding peace and happiness in a new one. So students had the opportunity to ask questions about the text as well as Ms. Worga's writing process. So she had delivered an engaging presentation that not only talked about the inspiration for the writing of this book, Other Words for Home, but she also spoke about her just recently published work in 2022 called A Rover's Story. Ultimately, Ms. Worga emphasized the importance of telling one's story, highlighting how we all have a story that is worthy to be told and worthy to be heard. So here you'll see Ms. Worga is autographing copies of her book. Students were also able, as I alluded to earlier, to complete an additional task to be considered for the VIP area. So this was an opportunity for those students, after the larger sixth-grade presentation, to meet with Ms. Worga in a separate area. This task that students wrote included a writing assignment where students talked about how they personally connected to the novel or how they connected to the way that it was written. So if you haven't read this book, it's written in verse, so the way that Ms. Worga writes is very poetic in terms of her craft. In the VIP area, students were able to receive autographed copies of the book and were able to ask Ms. Worga questions specific about the book as well as Ms. Worga's unique writing process. So we're very thankful to the MSF, we thank them for their continued support. We also thank Mrs. Savino and Ms. Malone for putting the grant together. And also, I feel like it's important to identify some quotes from the novel. One that spoke to kind of us as a district, we are proud of each other, proud of what we have created together, it is lovely to be a part of something that feels bigger than you. And one last piece quote, hoping, I'm starting to think, might be the bravest thing a person can do. So that was a really exciting, really exciting time that our students seemed to enjoy, and Ms. Worga was absolutely wonderful. So thank you again to the MSF.
What would you expect your assignment that allowed you to participate?
Yeah.
We just crashed the party, Mike. And last but certainly not least, we all have been a very hard time.
Okay, we have all the time in the world.
This is something that's important to take a moment and show our appreciation. For all of you on the dais who do not know, January is New Jersey School Board Recognition Month. So we wanted to take a moment and really honor you and all of your work for what you do for our kids and for our district and really make Mawa a place that's truly special. Just so you're aware, the state has put out a resolution that I would like, and I'm sorry, Kyle, I didn't talk to you about this, but I would like to walk in as 18Z, I believe, and if you just allow me to read it into the record right now. "The resolution in honor of New Jersey School Board Recognition Month. Whereas the New Jersey State Board of Education, which adopts the administrative code to implement state education law, has established rigorous standards through its promulgation of the New Jersey Student Learning Standards, which set the expectations of academic achievement for nearly 1.4 million public school children. End. Whereas, New Jersey's locally elected and appointed boards of education play a vital role in ensuring that their local school districts meet state standards and adhere to state and federal education statute and regulations, with the goal of preparing all students for college and the workplace, thereby enabling them to compete in a global economy. End. Whereas, New Jersey's 5,000 nonpartisan local Board of Education members and charter school trustees are public servants who dedicate their time without pay or benefit to the oversight of school district operations, sound financial practices, comprehensive policies, curriculum, staffing, and the well-being and academic achievement of all students in the district. End."
Whereas, the efforts of local boards of education in conjunction with state education officials and local educators have built a foundation of success that has led to New Jersey's status as a leader in student achievement, as evidenced by the National Assessment of Educational Progress Scores. And whereas the National School Boards Association and the New Jersey School Boards Association have declared January 2022, 2023 to be School Board Recognition Month, now therefore be it resolved that the New Jersey State Board of Education and the Acting Commissioner of Education recognizes the contributions of our state's local boards of education to the academic success of its public school students and expresses its sincere appreciation to local Board of Education members for their continued focus on the achievement of children throughout New Jersey. And be it further resolved that the New Jersey State Board of Education and the Acting Commissioner of Education encourages qualified New Jersey citizens to consider serving as members on their local school boards."
So with that, obviously, 18Z, I believe it would be. We wanted to show our appreciation for the work that you did, you do. And obviously, there's some things that we can do to share that. We have a certificate of appreciation, which we'd be handing out to you, just sharing our sincere appreciation for your dedication and commitment to the children of Mawa through outstanding service and leadership. So you will be getting a certificate, and we felt like what better way to share our appreciation with all the work and time you put in than a mug that you can put your coffee in, and obviously with our Mawa tea bird on the front. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. I did not know about this, this is a surprise. Wow, they kept this under wraps.
Can you just make sure I think I put this band? Thank you so much.
Thank you, Dennis.
Thank you.
Very nice.
Thank you very much. I got your mug. You need two, though, you need to give to your fellow.
He's a gentleman.
He is a gentleman. That's a tough world you live in.
Wow, well, thank you very much, and you ended on certainly a high note. Well, listen, I mean, to be appreciated and is always appreciated. So we do, I think I could speak on behalf of the board when I say, thank you very much for recognizing everyone's contribution here at the table, and we are grateful to serve with an administrative team like yours, all of you, and we've, you know, look forward to always working well together. So I mean, thank you very much, though, it's very nice, and I'm not sure this And I'm not sure this might be used just for coffee, but we do appreciate the sentiment. Excellent. Sure, why don't we just do that? Can we do that?
Absolutely.
All right, let's have a motion on the, can I just, on eighteen Z that Dr. Dittoro and Dr. Fair read off to us. Resolution in honor of New Jersey School Board Recognition Month. I need a motion. Mr. Kizmarsky second, Mr. Denise. Let's take a roll call on that. Mr. Bleecker, thank you.
Ms. Devonara.
Yes.
Mr. Denise.
Yes.
Mr. Gallin.
Yes, and thank you.
Mr. Hughes.
Yes.
Mr. Kizmarsky.
Yes, thank you.
Ms. DeCoe.
Yes, thank you.
And Dr. Worga.
Yes, thank you very much. Okay, Dr. Fair. Do you have a report for us this evening? Oh, sorry, I skipped. Mr. Bleecker, I apologize. Mr. Bleecker, do you have a report for us this evening? I see a financial update. Mr. Bleecker, thank you, sorry.
Yes, I do. I have a, an update for the board as it relates to what the board goals. Now, we're establishing the board for this year for the 2023 year to have more of a presentation throughout the year discussing some specifics regarding financials and, in this case tonight, benefits and budget that are afforded employees of the district, part of the district. So I have that, and following that, I just have a couple of agenda items I'm going to highlight. But first, to go into some of the benefits that are, thank you, Ms. Martinez, that are offered to some of our employees within the district. I'm just going to go over and highlight some of the benefits. I'm not going to go into any specifics regarding cost or numbers. That we'll talk about and address when we have budget conversations and budget meetings, presentations later in the year, in the coming months. But wanted just to highlight a couple of things that we do offer our staff benefits as employees of the Board of Education. So first and perhaps foremost, we do have benefits that are available for eligible staff for medical coverage. That's health prescription and dental are the three areas that the district offers. For health coverage, we have coverage provided through the school employees' health benefit plan. This is a state plan that we're a member of. Ourselves and approximately 298 other districts participated throughout the state of New Jersey. Verizon Blue Cross Blue Shield does the carrier for this plan. And depending on the employee's date of enrollment into the SDHBP, they may have as many as four plans to choose from, each with varying levels of coverage and premium costs. Currently, we have in the district about 350 employees that are, receive health benefit coverage for themselves and for their eligible dependents through the district. Prescription coverage that the district offers is through a company called Benicard, prescription coverage carrier. This is a standalone provider. We have a contract directly between the district and them. We do not participate in state program for prescription, or in a moment you'll hear dental either. But for Benicard, there are two plans that are offered to our staff. Those two plans, depending on the healthcare coverage that you select from the state, there's a corresponding prescription plan that you would be eligible for through Benicard. The last coverage I mentioned that we do offer is dental coverage. That dental coverage is for, again, eligible dependents and their, I'm sorry, eligible staff and their dependents. That is done through Delta Dental. Other benefits that we offer, we offer two types of flex spending accounts that are available to employees. This is a voluntary enrollment. Employees are not required at all to sign up for these. It's a voluntary enrollment that we have, or sign up that we have, I should say. Every year, this is a July 1 through June 30 enrollment period that we have. The first one, the FSA flexible spending account allows employees to put away pre-tax dollars to offset any medical reimbursement costs, reimbursements for dependent and family care. For medical care, it's $2,500 for the year, or for dependent family care, it can be $5,000. Combined, the district has about 42 employees that participate in this plan. The other form of FSA or flexible spending account that we offer is for any employees who may rely on public transportation to commute between work and home. We do have here in the district a train station, bus lines also that run through the township. And we do have a handful of employees that commute using those means to and from work. So we do have an FSA plan that allows employees to be reimbursed up to $280 for the cost of that public transportation on their day-to-day commute to work. A few other benefits that are offered is there is a disability package, again, a completely, much like FSA, a completely voluntary package that employees can enroll in. There is a portion of disability that is covered through pension plan, which we'll get to in one moment. But this is on top of that, if anybody would like to enroll in additional disability. This is an optional plan that is offered to them. And another optional is the ability to put away money into a tax shelter for retirement. This is through plans such as a 403B, 457 plan, or 430 growth. These plans are coordinated and offered to the employees through a third-party ministry that we work with called the Omni Financial Group. The rules, regulations, and maximum contribution limits for these plans are all controlled and governed by the IRS. And Omni Financial helps to ensure that both the district and our employees stay within those IRS regulations. Currently, the district has seven different partners that we work with, seven different offerings or companies that an employee may open up one of these 403D or 457 plans with. Again, completely at the employee's discretion. There's no mandatory contribution for something like this. And the last benefit that is offered for employees, mandatory contribution for anyone that is eligible is to participate in the state's pension plan. The state's pension plan for most employees is going to be either the PERS or the TPF plan. We also have some employees who enroll in a direct contribution plan called DCRP. For PERS and TPF, those members contribute seven and a half percent of their salary towards the plan. For anybody that is eligible for a DCRP, the employees are contributing five and a half percent, and then the employer or the district contributes three percent. These limits and caps and all the rules for the pension plans are all governed by the state of New Jersey. Some people often mistake and think that when they retire, the Mawa Board of Education is the one writing them a check for their retirement for the pension. That's not the case. All of this is done through the state of New Jersey. The Mawa Board of Education is just the pathway through withholding the funds from an employee's paycheck and then remitting it to the state of New Jersey. So those are highlights of some benefits that employees have as part of the Board of Education and through the district. The other item I have to update and to speak about is just general budget process. I spoke a few meetings ago about the budget calendar that we have here in the district and what it looks like internally here for budgeting, for preparing the budget for each year. Some of the items I wanted to discuss at the state-level budget process that contribute and work towards that. We have a couple of state reports that we do throughout the year. We have the DRTRS report, which is a transportation report that takes a snapshot of the data from October 15. We also have an enrollment report called the ASSA, the Application for State School Aid. That is a snapshot date of also October 15 and provides enrollment ads to the state that helps to impact and is part of the formula that determines our state aid for each year. Those snapshot dates are reloaded into the budget software that we receive to input our budget each year. That along with information from the audit that just closed and is going to be an agenda item on tonight's agenda. So the information from those reports, the information from the audit, the information that is inputted in now that the budget software is open from both the status of this year's budget as well as our projections for next year are all inputted to the software. And after that, they'll process align similar to what was discussed at the budget calendar a few meetings ago. We have a county submission due date where we have to submit the budget to the county, usually via a date in mid to late March. The county reviews it and reports back any corrections that they want us to see or any areas that they have further questions on that we can answer for. The Board of Education, because we operate under a November election as opposed to an April election, the November election for that, the date for us to ratify and certify the final budget for next year is going to be the end of April, early May. And shortly after that, we will provide whatever impact that the next year's budget will have on the tax levy to the township, to the county, so that they can properly prepare and assess residents, what their tax rate and tax levy is going to be for the next year. So in very generalities, that was one of the things I wanted to discuss, was just talk about benefits that are afforded the employees and about the general budget process. Again, not at the local level, because we did that a few meetings ago, but talk a little bit at the state level of some of the different reports and documents that feed into the budget. Before I move on to a couple of agendas to highlight, any questions on either of those?
Just quickly on the benefits you may want, I don't know if you mentioned that, if you mentioned that employees contribute to the health benefit program under various schemes. They just may want to, very high level, talk about employee contributions.
Sure, I could take a moment. So Mr. Gallin was correct, employees contribute to, to the benefits, the medical benefits I mentioned before, through a formula that is first, was first prescribed by the state several years ago. That was through a state statute called Chapter 78. And there was an additional one just a couple of years ago that revised and tweaked and made a few changes to it called Chapter 44. That came about maybe three, four years ago that impacted some of the newer employees that have joined the organization. So there is a contribution formula that allows employees to offset some of the costs at the district. And with that, as I said, one more part, and then I'll, I'll be done with the evening. It's just a couple of agenda items to highlight. The first one I wanted to highlight and mention is the audit, which is Agenda Item 17O. So 17O is the Agenda of Resolution for the Audit from June 2022. This is done a little bit later than typical years. However, we are still within the state requirements. The deadline to approve the audit did get pushed back a couple of times by the state due to some documents or reports that the state actually needs to release. So because of the delay there, it caused the deadline for us to approve it back a little bit for both us and for our auditors. But we did receive it just recently from our auditors. We had a discussion about this, a little bit at the finance meeting last week, and the Finance Committee is arranging a meeting with Ms. Heidi Wallop, who is the partner in charge of the district for the, our independent audit firm, Nissavatia LLP, to speak with us in a couple of weeks about some of the finer details. But happy to report that the audit for the second year in a row has no audit findings for it. One item, just to correct on the agenda, is under O, number 10, where it says, "Staff's prior year's findings." That was erroneously carried over from the prior year's resolution. That should say none, so just want to make a note of that. We'll correct that on the final. But very proud, two years in a row, not having any audit recommendations. This is a huge thank you to the staff and where that plays a role in operations of the district and the finance of the district. And again, as I've said in past years, the audit not only looks at finances, but also how our meeting minutes are held. It looks at child study records, IP records, how those align with some of the state reports I mentioned before, enrollment and transportation reports. So for everyone in the district staff that's involved with those, big thank you. Their diligence and dedication to what they do and the accuracy of the information that they input helped us achieve no audit recommendations for a second year in a row. Another item to highlight is just below that, Item P, and that was a donation that the district was the recipient of from a former student here in district who took it upon themselves to raise some money to provide and give to the district to help offset some families and any students who may have a negative balance or carrying a negative balance. Very generous donation that we were, we were not expecting at all. And again, we, well, we would love to highlight them and thank them personally. We also respect that they want to remain anonymous. Two other items. First one is rod grants. You'll notice on the agenda, a couple of resolutions for rod grants. Just want to very briefly highlight and share with the district what these are. So rod grants stands for regular operating district. This is a grant opportunity through the state of New Jersey. The state of New Jersey has $350 million available. To process that isn't open yet, but it's expected to open within the next couple of weeks to a month, month and a half. This is the ability for us to fund certain capital projects while under, under normal scenarios, we would have to be funding them primarily through local funds or any grants or awards that we might receive locally. This is the ability outside of a bond referendum or anything else of that nature for the state to contribute a portion of funds to help fund these projects. So while these, the resolutions only authorize us to apply the schematic designs and submit the applications for these projects, final determination on moving forward on these projects will be made once we're aware of what funding we have available, combined with our local reserve monies to ultimately proceed on the projects. The resolutions tonight do allow us to move forward on them and submit them to the state to be eligible for a piece of that $350 million. Again, the $350 million is for all districts in the state. And last item I have is HVAC upgrades at George Washington Elementary School. We had a bid opening earlier in the month in January, shortly after the, we returned from a break to award this to Atman Plumbing and Heating from Midland Park, New Jersey. They were the lowest responsible bidder in our bid. This will replace HVAC units in all classrooms within George Washington School. It will also include an electrical upgrade to the school that is necessary to run and power the new equipment. The goal of this and end goal is to remove some of the air conditioning units that are currently in windows having both heating and air conditioning provided from one unit within the classroom. Improved ventilation with it as well. This married with the project that we recently are in the process of completing. The window is stored for a replacement project in some classrooms in George Washington will really greatly improve some of the efficiency of the overall systems at the school. And that's where we're focusing.
Can I just jump in real fast about the donation? I just wanted just to add to what Mr. Bleecker was saying. We're extremely grateful for the generosity of this donor. To really look at the dynamics of the donation, of course, we're so grateful for any donation. And oftentimes, a donation will come in specific to a certain area because that person has a passion or an interest or expertise in that specific field or subject area. But for this one, ironically enough, we talk about social media and the negative impacts that it has on social media. This actually is aligned to a TikTok trend that there's something about giving back to an organization. So this is a former high school student, a former alumni that we have that understands the importance of all of us coming together to, to support our own. And to have someone come back, unfortunately, they're anonymous, because I would love to celebrate them by name. But that being said, it's a Mawa graduate, which is a point of pride for us to begin with, to, to say that they want to give something that they're, they're able to give to us and to understand that this donation not only wiped out the balances of our students who are qualified under free and reduced lunch, but also there are some additional funds for future balances. Really makes an impact on so many different families that, that weren't asking for it. But, but hopefully that will give them a little bit more comfort moving forward in whatever they choose to do. So I just wanted to take a moment and say thank you. I don't know if it's ever going to get back to this person, but we just want to say thank you and we're grateful for the generosity of our alumni to take the time to come back and give back to the community that it seems did right by them. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Bleecker, for a very comprehensive. I, I found it actually to be very invaluable. I, I learned a lot, Mr. Bleecker. Thank you very much. So I think working towards our board goal, I think that was, it was very enlightening. So thank you for all that information. And I would agree with you, Dr. Dittoro. It's called Pay It Forward. So special thanks to, and I think it's great to wipe out the look. I, I think perhaps even my child had a negative balance at one point. So it's kind of embarrassing, but it's one thing you kind of don't think about. So I think it's something very unique that the student did, and I think that's, that's just kind of a, kind of a cool thing. That's excellent. Dr. Fair, do we have a report this evening? I'm assuming yes.
Yes, I do. I hope it's as enlightening as Mr. Bleecker's. So. Yeah, so I see, you'll see on your agenda, we have our summer programs are listed for approval. We have our extended school year, our booster camp, summer solvers, Camp Invention, our kindergarten kickstart program is back, Safety Town, as well as our summer music program. So we're really excited. We're obviously looking ahead. Summer will be here before we know it. So that's the first piece. The second piece, I'd like to respectfully. The second piece, I'd like to respectfully request an edit to Agenda Item Eighteen-A, where the dates listed are January nineteenth, twenty twenty-three, through January twenty-third, twenty twenty-three. I respectfully request an edit to have that last date changed to January twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three, Dr. Morthee?
Sure. Ed, do I need to, no need to vote or anything like that?
No.
No problem, Dr. Fair.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And we also have three retirements to announce on this evening's agenda. So, our first retirement is Agenda Item Eighteen-B. We have Holly Smirnoff, who is a special education teacher at Joyce Comer School. We celebrate Ms. Smirnoff's retirement and her dedication to her students. She has served as a special education teacher for the past twenty-five years. To Ms. Smirnoff, the home-to-school connection has always been a particular priority and a passion for Ms. Smirnoff, as she often connects with parents regularly to share all types of information, especially as it relates to students' progress and growth. Ms. Smirnoff continues to be a strong advocate for all students, ensuring that they have what they need to be successful learners. In this regard, when she learns about the challenges for her students, she regularly comes in with enthusiasm and ideas of what she can do to support them better. She is excited to spend time with her boys in her retirement. She has two sons she's looking forward to spending some quality time with. Our second retirement is Ms. Lynn Torres, who is a teacher at Ramapo Ridge Middle School. Mrs. Lynn Torres has devoted the past twenty-five years to shaping the lives and Spanish language acquisition of her students at Ramapo Ridge. As a trusted member of the World Language Department, Mrs. Torres has helped to develop authentic materials for Spanish instruction, has collaborated with peers on essential curricular matters, and has brought the Spanish culture to life for countless students. Lynn's professionalism and commitment to her students has been unwavering, and we are grateful for the time and dedication she has given to the Ramapo Ridge Middle School community for all of these years. I was recently at a World Language Department meeting where I looked over at Lynn, I asked her how she felt about her retirement, and she said that she had very mixed feelings. She'll very much miss it here, but she's looking forward to babysitting her granddog and celebrating one of her daughters who recently got engaged. So, we're excited for her and all that life brings with, with such milestones. And our third retirement, and certainly not least, we have Mr. Mark Phelan. He is a special education teacher at Lenape Meadows School. Mr. Phelan serves as a valued staff member at Lenape Meadows. During his twenty-four-year career working in Mawa public schools, Mr. Phelan has helped support and positively influenced many of our students' lives. During his twenty-four years in our district, Mr. Phelan has served in the capacity of a special education teacher and as a dedicated staff member who always puts a smile on, on the students' faces with his fun outfits during holidays or themed days. We will miss Mark and wish him nothing but the best in his retirement. That's my report.
Thank you very much. All right, so President's Report. And so, I apologize, I'm going to try not to take too many of your things, Mr. Kane, I'm not sure, I should have touched base with you, but the first thing I just wanted to say is part of our equity audit, I wanted to just thank all of those members of the community and our staff who participated in our focus groups. Us Squared was here to do focus groups, to talk to students within the school and staff, so I just wanted to thank everyone for their participation with those few days. There's a lot of sports going on, and I just, I'm going to say, the Twitter feed is like, you know, off the charts. So I'm going to make, mention a few things. I apologize because I'm probably going to miss somebody, and I apologize for that, but there's a few sort of school records, all sorts of stuff. So first in, from the swim team, are you going to talk about these things, Mr. Kane?
Oh, all you.
All right. So we have freshman Yasem Ali, who set a school record in two hundred IM. I mean, school record is, is pretty impressive. We also have some diving students, Christian Merturi, for breaking the school record for six dives with her score, or with his score, I apologize, and Carolyn Rano for a great dive meet also. I know nothing about these scores, so two eleven point thirty-five and one ninety-one don't mean, I don't know what that means, but congratulations. We also had four by two hundred, the relay team of Harley Taylor, Sienna Cannonberg, Riley Bostico, and Ally Clanky for winning their race and placing first in the Bergen County, at the Bergen County Relays. I'm assuming this is indoor track? Okay. And then the sprint medley team of Zoe Merriman, Harley Taylor, Sienna Cannonberg, and Ally Clanky for winning their division and placing second in all of Bergen County. Also, congratulations to senior Abigail Puzo and sophomore Juliana Capitanello for being honored at the New Jersey, I think this is girls soccer, All-State Awards banquet. Again, Abby, Abigail is a senior and Juliana is a sophomore, so excellent. Coach Brannick looks like was inducted to Waldwick High School Athletic Hall of Fame. He's a ninety-five graduate, congratulations to him, who coaches here at Mawa. And, and I don't know, I thought maybe you would mention this, Mr. Kane, coach, is it Siegel or Siegel, Mr. Ice Hockey at the end of our table, for Mawa High School Ice Hockey for his hundredth career win over Tenafly, so that's pretty tremendous. And I'm sure I've missed people, but congratulations, keep doing what you're doing, and wonderful stuff. I also just wanted to highlight the Board Committee Report section, because since the last meeting, committee assignments have taken place, and I just want to provide a little bit of feedback. So, board members make their requests, and then committees are put together by myself and appointed. So, I just wanted to highlight, again, these are the committees that we currently have and the chairs of the committees. Instruction and Curriculum and Special Ed is myself. Finance and Facilities is Mr. Gallo. Policy Committee is Mr. Denise. Community Relations, our new chair is Ms. Davinero. The Executive Planning Committee is myself and Mr. Kizmarsky and Mr. De Silva. The Negotiations Committee, Mr. Gallo. And then we have liaisons to Bergen County School Boards, Mawa Schools Foundation, Mawa Access for All. And we also have the Transportation Ad-hoc Committee, which we created last year, and that's chaired by Ms. Davinero. So, and our new liaison, new, is our Board of Education Liaison to the Town Council, is Mr., going to be Mr. Kizmarsky this year. Since we have a liaison from them, I thought it only appropriate that we have a liaison to them. So, these are all the committee reports, so you'll hear new people perhaps doing some of the reports this evening, I just wanted to give a heads up. And thank you to all the board members for volunteering your time to committees, offering to serve on committees, because our board is set up as a committee-driven board, so we discuss things in committees and then it comes to the board for votes, et cetera, so for people to understand that. All right, thank you very much. Now, let's move on to committee reports, and maybe we're, I, I was just going to Mr. Kane, if he would like to give the student representative report first. Thinking alike, Ms., Dr. Dettore.
Thank you. So this week, we have a lot of first competitions for some of our scholastic teams at the school. Mock Trial has their first competition tomorrow, and the Academic Cathol has their first competition this Saturday. For the Winter Guard, they have their first competition Saturday at West Orange High School. And also tomorrow, the Art Club is hosting a representative from Savannah College of Art and Design. I believe that's happening first period tomorrow, so I think a lot of our art students who are in the higher level classes have that experience from a representative who's not a student, but someone who works within the college. The Robotics Team is in their build season. For our junior class, they're selling their formal tickets right now, and their junior formal is scheduled for March twenty-third. With our Drama Department and our Theater Arts, Shrek auditions are done, and they're currently in the works of putting on their play.
They're cool.
And then with our winter sports, a lot of them are starting to wrap up. I think state competitions for a lot of sports come in the next couple of weeks. A lot of, a lot of teams are having their senior nights. The hockey team had their senior night last Sunday, wrestling had their senior night tonight. And then next Wednesday, February third, at seven o'clock, is the Mawa for Marcus basketball game at the high school, so very excited for that.
Thank you, Mr. Kane. And just so you know, we've created sort of a new rule that after the representative report, if you'd like, since our meetings are going a little longer, you can excuse yourself if you'd like. So thank you very much. You sit very patiently, and so anyway. All right, other board committee reports this evening. Mr. Denise?
Policy. Policy, there's five policies and eight regulations on tonight's agenda for first reading, and also two policies that are being abolished. Policies sixteen forty-eight, eleven, wrote forward, and policy sixteen forty-eight, twenty-thirteen, school employee vaccination requirements are COVID-related, and they're being abolished because they are no longer required by the New Jersey Department of Education or have been rescinded by executive order. Policy, policy and regulation twenty-four twenty-three, bilingual and EESL education, have been revised to include the addition of an alternative English language proficiency assessment for students who meet the criteria, a revision to the definition of native language, and a requirement that school districts administer the statewide whole language survey to determine which students have a native language other than English. Policy and regulation twenty-four twenty-five, emergency virtual or remote instruction program has, has been revised, and a new regulation twenty-four twenty-five has been developed to comply with new state regulations and updated Department of Education guidance and provide statutory administrative code requirements for a school district's emergency virtual or remote instruction plan, which is required to be submitted to the Commissioner of Education by September thirtieth of each year. Policy and regulation fifty-two hundred attendance have been revised to address excused and unexcused absences for the purpose of truancy, student conduct promotion, retention, and award of course credit, in addition to including several additional options for excused absences that are at the board's discretion. Policy eighty-one forty, student enrollments, and regulation eighty-one forty, enrollment and counting, have been revised to replace the definition average daily attendance with a newly created definition, days and membership, and other minor edits to reflect changes to the language in the regulation. Policy and regulation eighty-three thirty, student records, have been revised to include minor language and citation changes. And lastly, there's regulation eighty-four twenty dot two, bomb threats, eighty-four twenty dot seven, lockdown procedures, and eighty-four twenty dot ten, active shooter, have been revised to indicate the bomb threat, lockdown, and active shooter procedures will be included in the school district's plans, procedures, and mechanisms for school safety and security, but shall not be subject to public access.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Denise. Mr. Gallo, did I see your hand up? By chance?
I am going, I have a brief report for Finance, Facilities, and Negotiations. Finance facilities, I met last week, I was not able to attend because of illness, but Kyle provided the committee with a, an in-depth review of all the, the status of all of our capital projects underway in the district, of which there are many. Most are moving forward expeditiously and to a good conclusion. I also want to echo Kyle's comments on the audit. This is another year with no corrective actions required. Again, just demonstration of the sound operation of our district and that sort of our district, and all the proper controls of our finances and facilities for the benefit of our students. Also, the Finance Facilities, I, if you look into our audit report, there's a page that has a history of the Capital Reserve. It's, it's typically, it's a long table, but now they've condensed it. I think it's important for the community to know that since this two thousand, two thousand and one school year, almost twenty-seven point two million dollars has been, has been saved by the district, of which, as of last June thirtieth, we've invested close to eighteen point seven million dollars in our facilities, without having to go back to the public through bond referendum and ask for money. So we've been able to make things like the steam building, the generator at the school, the storefront projects, the restoration of our track and field, the grandstand project, and any number of projects that the district has undertaken over that time to keep our facilities in a safe and maintainable condition, again, for the better for our students and staff. It's a, it's a substantial accomplishment. Most districts don't have these kinds of resources, and we're very fortunate to be able to make these investments and keep our facilities in good condition. Just a brief note on negotiations, we're welcoming Prima back to the committee, thank you. I want to thank, we've kicked off our first cycle of face-to-face meetings with the MEA. I think we're off to a positive start. We started a dialogue, basically where we left off the last contract cycle, in a conversational position, and I want to thank, I mean, there's probably ten, twelve MEA members, I want to thank them for their contribution, their time to the process, as well as the time for our administrative team, and of course, board members who are on the negotiations team. And we look forward again to having that conversation, dialogue continued for a, a result that's both beneficial to our employees, recognizes the community's investment, and is good for our students. So, we look forward to a good season of negotiation. That's my report.
Thank you, Mr. Gallo, appreciate that. Would you like me to go, you want to go?
I'll go.
Ms. Davinero, looking forward to this.
Hello, friends. Okay. Quick, quick updates. From the Transportation Desk here, Kyle and I met this week, just to kind of plan for what we want to do this year. We did a quick recap of what we accomplished last year, kind of very loosely set our goals for this year, where do we want to go. It was a really nice strategic meeting before we sat down as a committee to really start to put that work, so I appreciate Kyle and your time on Monday. We're just feeling really good. We spent last year really kind of digging into information, you know, transportation was a very big idea, you know, what do we really want to do with the information that we're gathering? You know, data is very big, so where do we want to go from here? So we're really looking forward to the work that will start this year, and we'll be sharing words with the community as we go. Access for All, their next meeting is the first Monday of February. When we had met between Access for All and the Board of Education, we met with, you know, Dr. Dettore and Lisa, and we kind of talked about the partnership that we want to grow there. One of the asks that we had for them is if they could provide us with kind of a pamphlet or infographic of what Access for All does, so we have that information, we can pass on to a couple of families in the district. I saw the rough draft of that tonight in an email, it looks amazing. They are passing it back and forth, it should be confirmed at their first meeting in February, and then I'll come back to you guys with that. We can just continue to grow that partnership as we move on. I decided to continue with Community Corner going into this year, very excited, a little bit nervous, going to skip over all the parts that Dr. Morthee stole from me.
That's what used to happen. Did nothing change.
Nothing changed. Just a couple of quick things. January sixteenth is Martin the Thirteenth Junior Day. As Dr. Kane once said, everyone can be great because, everybody can be great because anybody can serve. The holiday is one of the few federal holidays designated as a national day of service to encourage all Americans to volunteer to improve their communities. Just want to say a special thank you to all of those here that step up and volunteer through several areas of Mawa to continue to enrich our community. There are endless ways to step up and get involved. Not only will you be doing something positive for your community, but in the end, you may actually end up enjoying it. January thirteenth is Korean American Day, which commemorates the arrival of the first Korean immigrants to the United States in nineteen oh three. Today also honors the Korean Americans and men's contributions to every aspect of society. And the day also honors the Korean Americans' immense contributions to every aspect of society. Chinese Lunar New Year began this past Sunday. For those who don't know, this is the year of the rabbit. According to Chinese tradition, this year is likely to be calm and gentle, bringing in energy that will help those looking for more of a balanced life. I feel like we all could use.
Calm and gentle.
Yes. Not so far, but. If you were born in the lunar year, starting in 1951, 1963, 1975, 87, 99, and 2011, you are also fall under the year of the rabbit, zodiac sign. So this is your year. Not mine, but maybe potentially yours. Today, January 25th is Virginia Woolf's birthday. Born in 1882, she went on to become a British literary luminary known for her work with feminist writing. Today is also known as a Room of One's Own Day, inspired by the Virginia Woolf book with the same name. Established in the early 2000s, this day celebrates independence and self-sustainability. You can celebrate literally by decorating your bedroom and enjoying time on your own, which is what I prefer to do, or metaphorically by closing the door on things that no longer serve or interest you. There is a theme that I'm enjoying. For those wondering, today is also National Opposite Day, National Irish Cream Coffee Day, National Florid Day, and National Library Shelfy Day, where you're encouraged to take a selfie with your favorite shelf at the library. I also had in my notes that January is Lunar Reputation Month and I just wanted to take a moment to say thank you to the eight people who sit up here with me, week after week. We come from vastly and wildly different backgrounds and thought process, et cetera, et cetera. And yet, the nine of us can always come to consensus and can always come to a common ground where we continue to put Maua students first, pushing Maua forward. That is something that is hard when you have nine very different personalities. And I very much appreciate the work that we have done, the work that we will continue to do to people being before us and whoever is here in the future. From a community standpoint, I'd like to call attention to the district website and there's several resources that can be found there. There are tabs that highlight the work we are doing with the strategic plan. There's a tab that talks about the pathways project at the high school where you can learn more about the eight elective career pathways. And most important personally to me is a tab for our Thunderbird Partnership Program. For those who don't know, our Thunderbird Partnership invites community members to work alongside educators in the classroom to bridge the gap between class content and real-world experience. This partnership is open to parents, relatives, community members, and community businesses. We invite all of you to register in our expert directory so that you can be called upon and classroom content matches your expertise. It's a phenomenal program. I talk to everybody and flow through with a base about it and I will continue to talk about it when we're sitting here. I have attempted to get myself called into a classroom based on my expertise and I will continue to do so because I think it's really phenomenal. And when you put real-world, real-world people in a classroom that connects to content that's being taught, it just bridges that gap for the students and all it does is enrich their curriculum and their learning. And a quick update from our friends at the Maua School Foundation. The grant cycle for grants opened last week will run through 2017. The MSF fundraised this year to impart, be able to fund grants submitted by teaching staff throughout the district during this time. Each teacher can submit a grant request so long as it meets the below criteria. It must link directly to Maua Public Schools' mission and curriculum, enhance existing curriculum and/or instruction, expand educational experience of students, and apply innovative and creative teaching and/or learning methods. The MSF is very happy to announce they're bringing back their annual gala this year. It will be held on 4/13 from 6:30 to 10:30 at Masculiscos in Hawthorne. The theme is Night in Vegas. So I'm very excited that this gala is returning. Tickets go on sale in February, I will be there, I hope most of you will be there as well.
What was the date on that?
April 13. They are holding their annual 50/50. They will start selling tickets in May. The drawing will be held on 6/21. And then the Thunderbird Run is already planned for the fall. It will be October 22nd this year. That's it, go ahead.
Thank you very much. Ms. Davinero, I don't think I took much of what you had to say.
Well, it's on my Facebook stories.
Oh, okay, well, and I would say that I think your predecessor would be proud of your community career, so, thank you. And I think it's also the Maua Schools Foundation 20th anniversary year is what I was also told, that there's some celebration of an anniversary for them with the gala. Maybe it's the 20th anniversary of the gala. Mr. Kizmarsky?
Because the galas got skipped over due to COVID.
Ah, be the 20th, not the 20, okay, that's what, okay, now.
I mean, it could be the 20th ever.
I don't think so, because I think this. Whatever they want to do, we'll all be there. Absolutely. All right, instruction and curriculum. We did have our January meeting. Two things that I want to highlight. Nikki Van Ness came and presented to us about the entrepreneurship program. There's an independent study that's going on and it's, the Diamond Challenge is a platform hosted by University of Delaware. Horn Entrepreneurship serves as the creative engine for entrepreneurship, education, and advancement at UD. So this is a semester course and concepts are due in early January and then virtual pitches are due in February, et cetera. There is some prize money awarded. And Dr. Bavino is going to get back to me, but this is an ongoing course and an ongoing independent study. Is that correct?
Yeah, the course is in the fall. Independent study would be in the spring if our teams were accepted. So we have to submit to Diamond Challenge. If we're accepted, those teams go into an independent study in the spring to develop their pitch and then go to the pitch site.
So concept developed, submitted in January, and hopefully, one of our teams or several of our teams is selected to actually go to the summit in late April. So thank you very much and keep us posted, Dr. Bavino. There was also an update to our AP Economics textbook and so that was just an update. One thing I wanted to highlight with AP Economics that came to our attention is that our program in Maua, the AP Economics course teaches both micro and macro in the same course. People might think that's not that critical, but in a lot of courses at schools, they do a whole course just micro and macro. So again, we're cutting edge and ahead. We also heard about from Mr. Jarvis and Ms. Polway, the Start Strong results, which you heard, and the data teams update, which I just wanted to highlight a little bit about that, that they provided an update that the data teams are meeting have started. They're meeting four times a year. They're looking at what the data is with the benchmark assessments. They're focusing on specifics, so what are the gaps and what are we going to do about it? And primarily this year, the focus is on tier-one support. So that is highlighting the largest sort of cohort of students. So again, thank you to all our teachers, administrative staff, Dr. Bavino, for this focus on data-driven decision-making in this district. Thank you very much. Okay, board member remarks, comments. Do we have anything remaining to say? All right, then let's go to old business. Let's take the minutes, A, B, C, or do you want to do it individually?
No, we're listening.
Okay, so A through C, old business. These are the minutes of previous meetings from December 21st, 2022, and then January 4th, 2023. Mo, what, separate? Okay, motion?
I had to think about it.
Okay, Mr. Kizmarsky, second by Mr. Denise. Okay, Mr. Leaker, please.
Ms. Davinero?
Yes.
Mr. Denise?
Yes.
Mr. Gallo?
Yes.
Mr. Hughes?
Yes.
Ms. Hughes, I'm going to abstain you from 16A. That was in December.
Oh, okay.
Thank you. Mr. Kizmarsky?
Well, I made the motion, I have to recuse myself from A as I was going. See?
Ms. Cohn?
Yes.
And Dr. Morthee?
Yes. All right, new business. Let's take A through G.G. Mr. Kizmarsky, Mr. Gallo, second, thank you very much. All right, any I think we've discussed, so, Mr. Bleeker?
Ms. Davinero?
Yes.
Mr. Denise?
Yes.
Mr. Gallo?
Yes.
Mr. Hughes?
Yes, but I'm going to abstain on you, Transportation Region.
Mr. Kizmarsky?
Yes, and I also would like to thank the anonymous donor. Good to see Maua High School about doing their best.
Thank you. Ms. Cohn?
Yes, and also thank you to the former student for the very generous donation.
And Dr. Morthee?
Yes.
And to hope for our rod submission, for success with the rod submission, we'd like a nice piece of that $350 million.
That would be excellent. All right, 18, new business personnel. So what I'd like to do generally is take the retirement separate if we could. So can we do, can I do A to Y excluding B, C, and D? Okay, great, because these are people with some significant years of service. I'd like to recognize them separately. So A to Y excluding B, C, and D, do I have a motion? Mr. Gallo, second by Ms. Cohn, thank you. Mr. Bleeker?
Okay, Ms. Davinero?
Yes.
Mr. Denise?
Yes.
Mr. Gallo?
Yes.
Mr. Hughes?
Yes.
Mr. Kizmarsky?
Yes.
Ms. Cohn?
Yes.
And Dr. Morthee?
Yes. All right, now let's take our retirements. 18, B, C, and D separately. And again, recognize and thank you to the 25 years and very, very close 25 years of service to our students in this district. And we graciously appreciate their dedication and we wish them well. I do have to say Holly Smirnoff was a different name when I, she, her maiden name was Edith Frimer? Right, is that correct? And anyway, she was there when my students started at George Washington. I've known her many years and truly one of a kind as are all these individuals who give so selflessly to our district. So, any other comments or do you have a motion? 18, B, C, and D. Mr. Kizmarsky, second by Ms. Cohn. Mr. Bleeker?
Ms. Davinero?
Yes, and a special thank you to Mr. Phelan. He's a fan favorite of my son. One of the few people who can get me sent to just sit into his math working class. And he's devastated after too, so.
Mr. Denise?
Yes.
Mr. Gallo?
Yes, and I wish all three retirees much happiness and good health in their retirement.
Mr. Hughes?
Yes.
Mr. Kizmarsky?
Yes.
Ms. Cohn?
Yes.
And Dr. Morthee?
Yes. All right, public participation. Public participation in board meetings is in accordance with Bylaw 0167. At this time, members of the public may ask questions or make a comment on educational issues or school matters of community interest. As a matter of fairness, you are asked to limit your questions to no more than one and your remarks to no longer than three minutes. If you are here representing a group, please identify as yourself, the group, and your position in the group. If you are here as an individual, please give us your name and address. This section of public participation will be limited to 15 minutes. I need a motion to open the meeting to the public. Mr. Hughes, and second by Mr. Kizmarsky. All right, we are officially open to the public.
Good evening, Lou Theodore. One hour in a place. A couple of questions on the Start Strong assessment. Dr. Bavino mentioned that it's just one, it's a small part, or maybe it's a small, but it's only a part of the assessment that they use for the kids. Do your internal, your internal numbers match what you saw as far as readiness for the kids?
Mr. Theodore, one second, let me just, did you want, do you want to?
Should I, I mean, I don't know. Yeah, I don't know who to direct it to.
We're going to welcome Dr. Bavino to the dais and perhaps she can answer those questions?
Oh, because you gave me.
Yeah, that's fine, just want to make sure we're doing it properly. Thank you, Mr. Theodore.
So, so yes, start, yes and no. What I will tell you is when we look at our assessments, we're looking at different sections of pieces, right? So when you're looking at the younger students with reading, we'll look, we'll look to dissect reading. We'll look at curriculum-based assessments about readiness to start in terms of a curricular, like the depth and breadth of an entire year. This assessment, although shadowing what we see, right, where we need to give support, it's a small piece. So for the English or the ELA test, it's only 10 questions. So that's why we rely on our assessments to show us.
More than that.
Yeah. But yes, they do, they do, they'll mirror each other and really, when you, when you go back to those results, it's not so much the dark purple, but the dark purple in the middle.
Yeah.
Those students, they're ready, they're ready. So having 20% of our kids that need extra support, that's within a range, that's a normal range that we would see.
Right, right. Yeah, I mean, because I was trying to compare it to the NJSLA assessment, which obviously is given at a different time of year and assessing something kind of different. But it does mirror that science seems to be the weakest subject, the area where the most help is needed. And especially because of the time the Start Strong assessment is given, I assume it's right at the beginning of the year, like within the first couple of months.
Yeah, it's within the first, we actually tested it the second week of school.
The second week of school. The one thing I've noticed from my child is that she does get work in both, I think she has a reading list or stuff to read over the summer and she has iExcel, which I believe is math, over the summer, but she didn't have anything for science over the summer. So that might be an area that you might want to look at because, especially if they're going to be taking an assessment so early. It's for some kids, it might have been three, four months since they looked at anything science-based. And since those, even though it was a terrible numbers, I think it was 30% needed extra support. But the NJSLA, there was quite a few kids who were deficient there. That might be an area that can help get those kids back on track. Because I know, there, I mean, she doesn't do a ton of work over the summer. I don't want to lie to you, but she is staying active mathematically and in like charts and not in science.
Yeah, to speak to that point, I know that when we were at line of view, we spoke about that. There were some of the things that I shared at that meeting. I think it's worth sharing again. Just a little quick note, I, they, there was a lot of content, but one of the pieces along the lines of the, the connection between the NJSLA data and the SMART data. The state advised us that that, we can't connect.
Yeah, I understand, I'm making my own just internal.
Right. The, another piece that I think that's worth noting is you're absolutely right. You know, we say in the, in the presentation that we're above the state, but that by no means are we satisfied with the science scores. So I want to be very clear, and I think we can speak for the entire team specific to that. Some of the things that I feel are going to make some noted improvements are our commitment to obviously the science integration K through 5, that obviously when you start to talk about the COVID impact, that was something that is, is something that was a little bit more removed than it is currently last, last year and this year. Another piece that we spoke about, and not to get too much into the weeds with this, is our, our continuous commitment not just to the science curriculum, but the engineering design process and that mindset. And that's something that we're infusing outside of that science curriculum in our STEAM initiatives and our Makerspace initiatives, especially at the lower level. If we can get them to start to think that way in that analysis and the process piece of it, the evaluation piece, I think it's going to really hold true with elevating their performance long-term. Because there's one piece about being able to spit out content and regurgitating information that you receive in the class. But how you put that into some sort of analysis and evaluation and provide some sort of explanation is really going to take our students to a whole different level. So there's a really comprehensive approach to what we're trying to do. The one piece is that NJTSS model of looking at the data over time and really seeing where are our gaps and what can we do better. So it's going to be an ongoing process for sure.
I appreciate it, thank you.
No problem.
Thank you, Mr. Theodore. And we'll, we'll make notation when extra science work is given over the summer. That, and the parents say we have too much work over the summer. We're kind of, you know, we've got you on our side on this, but thank you very much. Appreciate that. All right, motion to close the meeting to the public. Mr. Kizmarsky, second by Mr. Gallo. Or we do not need another executive session, so let me motion to adjourn our meeting. Mr. Denise, second by Mr. Hughes, we adjourn for the evening. Thank you very much, everybody. Thank you very much, everybody.
Thank you, thank you.
I was trying for nine.